Good evening and welcome to the September 2, 2015, meeting of the Gaithersbury Planning Commission. First up is the approval of our minutes, but I guess I need to note that Jerry, you were absent at that meeting, so we really don't have a quorum to...
Well, she can second the motion, and then abstain.
Well, okay then. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for our August 5 meeting, please?
It's a move.
Second.
So that's what you were able to do, I guess?
Yes.
It's been moved in second, and I'll favorably say aye.
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 And then I must abstain?
So that passes.
Because I was not present.
2-0-1, does that work? Okay, good. Will we dispatch for that? Next up is a sign permit. We have one tonight for sign 9220-2015 Montgomery Medical Clinic signage at 800 South Frederick Avenue in the E1 urban employment zone. This is for an icon sign, and it looks like presenting from staff is Greg Mann. Good evening, Greg.
John, there's a consent.
There's a consent.
Oh, did I skip over? I'm sorry. You know what? I'm working from a file that I got. I must have not had that.
Here.
Thank you. Greg, hold on just a minute. So there's one consent agenda. AFP-7118-2015 Bankeroff Residence at 405 Shapley Square Road for a covered front porch, and that's in the MXD Zone, and an amendment to final site plan. Is there any questions on the consent agenda?
No.
It's straightforward.
Okay. Is there a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve AFP-7118-2015 finding it compliance with the review requirements of 24-170A of the city's zoning ordinance with the one condition as written to the record.
It's moved?
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second, and I'll favorably say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, good. So I think I've got everything else from that forward lined up right here. So that takes us to the sign permit application. Greg, please, take it away.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is for a sign permit for a new 42.15 square foot channel letter sign that contains an icon. The property is located at 800 South Frederick Road in the Zone E1. This application comes before the Planning Commission because the sign contains an icon. Pursuant to Section 24-212J of the city code, all signs using icons shall require approval by the Planning Commission. The proposed sign is to be installed on the front facade facing South Frederick. The sign contains the name of the business and a pictorial presentation of a medical shield, which includes a snake. Staff recommends the Planning Commission grant approval of sign 9220-2015 Montgomery Medical Clinic Icon Sign, finding it to be in conformance to Section 24-212 of the city code with no conditions, and staff is available to answer any questions the Commission may have.
Any questions?
No.
Seems pretty straightforward. Is there anybody in the audience that's here to comment on this application? Okay, seeing nobody. There a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve sign 9220-2015 Montgomery Medical Clinic Icon Sign, finding it to be in conformance with 24-212 of the city's code with no conditions.
Second.
Moved in second, and I'll favorably say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thanks, Greg. Next up, we have a recommendation to Board of Appeals for BOA 6982-2015 Verizon Wireless, 301 Russell Avenue, the Wilson Healthcare Building in the R90 medium-density residential zone, for a special exception of telecommunications facility presented from staff is Caroline Sine. Good evening, Caroline.
Good evening. This is an application for a new special exception at 301 Russell Avenue, which is in Asbury. And this is the building right here on Russell Avenue. And this is the whole Asbury complex. There is a slight change from the application that identified the building as the Kindley Building, which is actually this building, but it had the correct address. And this is the Wilson Healthcare Building where the equipment will be going. 12 antennas and rooftop equipment. The antennas are also on the roof. And the applicant is Verizon Wireless, and Kathy Borton is here representing the application.
Good evening. Welcome back.
Thank you. Kathy Borton again on behalf of Verizon Wireless. I think the staff report is self-explanatory. Verizon Wireless supports the staff report and the four conditions of approval. This is a rooftop installation with 12 antennas being installed on existing cooling towers and the equipment being screened by an extension of an existing screen wall. The antennas will be painted to match. They do not rise above the cooling tower height. They are level with that. The screen wall will be painted and designed to match the existing screen wall that's already there in place. Will not look like an additional story. Will do nothing to the appearance of the building. So what I'd like to also do is introduce a few people that are here if you have any specific questions. With me tonight are Mr. Bob Pasilkin and Linda Lieberman, each of which is a site acquisition manager with Maztec. And together they've taken over this site from Jack Andrews, who you have in your packets as the gentleman that filed the application. We did provide the city with a revised authorization from Verizon Wireless, authorizing both of them to take over for Jack. Also with me this evening is Anthony Handley, a wireless consulting engineer with Millennium Engineering. And Millennium worked on the RF issues related to the application. We'd just like to thank Caroline for all the work she's done on the application, and thank you all for the opportunity to present this this evening.
Great, thanks. Caroline, why don't you, if you would, put, excuse me, the exhibit in our packet that was essentially the photo or retouched photo that...
Yeah.
Because I think our primary concern is compatibility or...
I think that's why we're going to make it bigger. So this was the after photograph. This piece of the screen wall is new.
Yeah, so there's really no, there's very little visual impact from...
Thrilling.
Yeah.
Thrilling stuff.
Well, just to be sure, the numbers sounded big. Was it 12 antenna or something like that that were going up there?
Right. The antennas are on the cooling towers. That's the screen wall you see there is blocking the equipment platform.
Very good. Any questions for the applicant?
Straightforward.
Is there anyone here that's commenting on this application? Okay. See now, Caroline, if you would do the recommendation, please.
There are four conditions that are listed as suggested conditions for the draft resolution, and staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of special exception BOA 6982-2015 to the Board of Appeals with the four conditions as listed.
Very good. It's pretty straightforward. Any concerns with the recommendation?
No.
All right, we're ready for a motion, please. And again, this is a motion to recommend to the council.
Mr. Chair, I recommend...
Board of Appeals. Our Board of Appeals, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I recommend that we recommend approval of special exception BOA 6982-2015 to the Board of Appeals with the four conditions as listed in the record.
Second. It's moved in second, and I'll favorably say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Next up is a recommendation to the Mayor and City Council for CTAM 7036-2015. And I won't read through the whole introduction because I can see Director of Planning John Schlichting is ready to set it up, so please take it away.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is an ordinance to amend Chapter 24 of the city zoning ordinance, Article 15, entitled "Adequate Public Facilities" and 24-246, entitled "Adequacy of School Capacity." As you all know, there was a joint public hearing held on this ordinance on July 6, 2015. A joint work session was held on August 10, 2015. The Planning Commission held its record open until 5:00 PM on August 24, 2015. At the time of the Commission record closing, one additional piece of testimony was received into the record. Now, as you recall, there were three facets of this proposed ordinance revision. There was the moratorium limits ranging from 120% to 150%. There was a proposed facilities payment fee, and there was also proposed waiver provisions. Now, as a result of the direction from the Council and the Planning Commission at the work session, the draft ordinance before you tonight includes a moratorium limit of 150%. It includes a facilities payment fee that will be included based upon individual schools at or above 105% capacity. In terms of the waiver provisions, this new ordinance, this new draft ordinance removes the annexation waiver provision. It removes the transit-oriented development waiver provision, and it amends the special study area waiver provision to not identify specific master plans in the ordinance, but to refer to the annual strategic plan for identified areas, which means that on an annual basis, the strategic plan would address where it's appropriate to have this waiver provision. It also amends the affordable housing waiver provision to establish a minimum of 15% moderately priced dwelling units and 15% workforce housing. And then it also retains the public civic use benefit waiver provision. Now, one thing I want to point out, which is also different and wasn't actually discussed at the public hearing or the work session, is that we've revised the draft ordinance based on the direction from the Assistant City Attorney because in order to comply with state requirements, the amount of the fee has to be the same as the Montgomery County fee. So the new language in this ordinance states that it will be the same as the Montgomery County fee.
But that was the, I think that was the consensus of everybody at the work session that it should be, right?
I think it was, but it wasn't at that time clear that it really had to be.
It had to be, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Okay. And also, based on, I think it was the direction of Chairman Bauer, we were asked to define exactly what this might mean, or the fee, what the fee might actually generate in terms of feasible development within the city. And right now, there are really two projects that we, there were three projects. Callan's Downtown, Orchard Pond, and Lake Forest Mall that were identified as being challenged by the moratorium situation. Lake Forest Mall, of course, we have no idea at this point how many units that would actually generate, so we did not include that. But we did include Callan's Downtown. And Callan's Downtown, excuse me, in the plan, does not actually define the number of units. It's left to be flexible and based on the STPs themselves. But at one point, we did estimate that potentially it could be 2,300 units. And for this analysis, we estimated that about 1,725 would be low-rise multifamily, and then 575 would be high-rise multifamily. Again, this is just speculative. But with those numbers, the amount of fee that would be generated would be $9.2 million. And then with Orchard Pond, we do know how many units that is. That's 1,410 additional units. And those units would actually generate an additional $6.6 million total there being almost $16 million. That could actually, that would be enough funds to actually build half an elementary school or about a third of a middle school. So it's a significant amount. And those are projects that, you know, we have already identified as potential projects to move forward. Also, the Council at the work session asked us to identify some areas, and they're in your memo, that are, or identify situations where a public benefit was created that would allow for significant public benefit that would be the impetus for a potential waiver. And a clear example of that is the Crown Development, even though that went through an annexation process, and it actually was the annexation process that defined the school site. But there is a high school site that has been identified at Crown Development and therefore is a, you know, a significant public amenity. So in conclusion, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission recommend adoption of this text amendment to the Mayor and City Council, and we're, Marty and I are happy to answer any questions.
Great. And our record is closed now, right?
That's correct.
So we're just moving to recommendation. Yeah, any questions?
No, I think the cleanup was great. And just from a housekeeping standpoint, keeping it as flexible as possible is wonderful. Sort of re-changing the numbers every year is always a pain, and then identifying specific properties, you know, may have run into state law, if not practicality of changing our, you know, sector plans or special study areas. So I think it's great. I think it's absolutely great.
Goodness, said it better myself.
I do want to mention one quick thing. I think it's moving in the right direction. I'm very happy that it's sort of cracked open a bit on the limits. But I know, and Matt, I think you actually brought this up, there was some conversation early on about specific citation would be the National Center for Smart Growth, where they really talk about the purpose of an APFO, and that really isn't meant to stop growth. It's meant to inform master plan activities, which is, may sound like there's not much difference, but there really is. I mean, it really wasn't meant to be...
The norm is there.
Yeah, they were opposite meaning. There really wasn't supposed to be used against the development. It was supposed to be used to inform infrastructure investment, things like that. But knowing that we can't control all that for the schools, it sort of worked against us, I guess, in the end. And I would, I guess with the other Commissioners' concurrence, either way, I'd like to reiterate that in our recommendation to the Council that, you know, I think if we were looking more purely from a planning perspective, we'd like to respect that sort of more global application of APFO as a guideline and not something that's really directly tied to an approval of site plans, but...
The state has good language. We could just steal.
Yeah.
You know, just to sort of copy and paste the state language, which is fairly concise.
Or utilize it. Steal is such an ugly word.
Utilize, oh, okay.
Not going to pay them for it.
I think that the quote was there intended to provide the rationale for prioritizing infrastructure investment decisions, but... There you go. Just to make it clear that I think if we had, if we were starting from scratch, we'd want to promote that as the use of it, but still, I think endorse that it's moving in the right direction to raise the limits and make it more practical for our own use. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it now moves towards measurement and public facility quantification rather than sort of ham-handed anti-development sort of package that we don't have control over.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments?
No.
All right, I think staff is recommending that we recommend approval, so is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we recommend adoption of text amendment, CTAM 7036-2015 to the Mayor and City Council.
Second.
It's moved in second, and I'll favorably say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passing unanimously. Thanks very much, John.
Thank you.
All right, next up is our site plan agenda. And we have one tonight, and that is SP-7083-2015, former IBM Site Redevelopment, 800 North Frederick Avenue. Demolish existing building and parking to construct new warehouse distribution facility. This is in the I-3 Zone Industrial Office Park, and it's a concept site plan presentation. Now, Trudy, I have the, Kurt was going to be presenting, but I guess you're doing it then.
Kirk did all the work, and I'm doing the presenting.
Great.
He is unable to be here tonight. Good evening, Commissioners. This is a concept site plan, as mentioned by Chair Bauer. The property is located on North Frederick Avenue, just north of the intersection of Montgomery Village Avenue, and then at the intersection of Christopher Avenue and south of Watkinsville, and also adjoining I-270. The applicant is here, Erica Latham, will take it from there.
Thank you. For the record, Erica Latham with Ballard Spa on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening.
Good evening. With me is Nicole Trent, I'm sorry, Nicole Noel. Hope that's the only thing I say wrong tonight. Noel Trent with Langdon, our civil engineer. And there are two of us here, but behind me are representatives of the applicant, representatives of the potential tenant, representatives of the property owner. So we are all here and available to answer questions. I'm going to just start briefly. I want to thank Trudy and Kurt and Ascencia. They've been very helpful to us as we've gone through this conceptual site plan process. The project for a distribution facility meets all the standards of the zone and the requirements for approval of the conceptual site plan. And we are in agreement with the proposed conditions. And I just perhaps would answer a question you haven't asked yet. There's a requirement that some land be dedicated to SHA for the Watkinsville Interchange that was shown on the already approved plat, so that will have no impact on this development. I also want to bring up one point, and I don't want to belabor it, and if you have questions, we're happy to answer it after the presentation. There was a letter from the neighboring property owner submitted late this afternoon, and to be honest, we were somewhat blindsided by the letter. Our client, the applicant, has been in communication for many months with that particular property owner and has shared all of these plans and requested comments and has had a dialogue ongoing. So seeing as we only saw this letter probably when you saw it, and we're happy to respond to any of those questions directly, but I just wanted to let you know at the outset that we have reviewed it, but we're surprised to have received it. So that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Noel, and then, I'm sorry, I'm going to turn it over to represent the applicant to describe the operation, and then Noel can walk through the site plan, and then I'll just follow up by answering some of the questions that came up in that memo.
Very good. Thank you.
So John Phillips with SunCap, representing the applicant.
Good evening, Commissioners. Appreciate your time and listening to us tonight and our presentation on this important project. This particular project is for a Fortune 100 company whom we do business with around the country. They are already in your community. You probably use them every day. And this particular facility is a package handling and sorting facility. It's not a bulk distribution warehouse. It's a 332,000-square-foot building, also includes a gateway building, which is kind of an ingress and egress for employees and intake, essentially, for employees, and a security building for traffic into and out of the facility. As I said, the company is a Fortune 100 company. The operation is a 24-hour-a-day operation. And if you've had a chance to look at any of the data on the facility, the traffic impacts are very, very much less intensive than you would expect from a facility this size, and a lot less intensive than what could go on this particular property or the existing use on the property. The way the facility operates, you have large trucks that come in from a hub somewhere in the region, bringing product to the facility on one side of the facility. And this happens over a 24-hour period, so those trucks are spread out. And like I said, relatively speaking, it's a small amount of trucks. Now, the other side of the facility, you have delivery vans, which come into the facility, line up, and overnight, they're loaded with the next day's deliveries. These are deliveries which, business-to-business, business-to-homes, which brings about the importance of this location. This particular company feels that this area is underserved and they could serve better. This location is close to their customer base. It's close to the residents who would use the service, it's close to the businesses that would use the service. Access to I-270 is a key here as well, and it's another reason the site was chosen. The customer base itself continues to grow as the rooftops in this area continue to grow. Another reason they need to be in this particular area. The facility is a lot greener quote than you would think because they are landing right smack in the middle of the customer base. The closer they are, the less they're driving, the less the trucks are driving, the large trucks, the small trucks, the delivery trucks. We do feel it's a conforming use, it's a great site. The particular uses there now is it's a semi-functional building, which is becoming less and less useful. This is an increase to the tax base, a great deal of capital investment, a large number of jobs. And it's essentially, the company has an impeccable reputation. We've done 25 of these facilities for them around the country, and everywhere they go, they're known as a good neighbor and a great member of the community. They're involved in the community, and they do a lot of local hiring. It's essentially, it's what I consider highest and best use for this property. Beyond that, you know, this is conceptual. We're open to suggestions. We plan on a lot of green space, a lot of buffering, and architectural enhancements as may be required from this point forward, and we're open to any and all suggestions therefore. And I'm going to introduce Noel Trent with our civil engineer, who's going to talk a little bit more about the site itself and the site plan. We're all here available for any questions or concerns you might have.
Just to follow up in your presence, let me ask you a couple of numbers questions. So how many employees would be on the site, do you think, just roughly? Not including all of the delivery trucks that are out?
Those delivery drivers are contractors, so anything that I tell you, it does not include the delivery drivers.
Okay.
A facility this size, and these are not full-time employees, maybe a couple of hundred part-time positions. There are several shifts throughout the day and night, and you'll have a couple of hundred.
Okay. And it's operating...
Thereabouts. Yes.
And how many trucks come on and off the site in a 24-hour period, do you think?
Noel?
Just rough numbers, just to kind of, what did you assume for traffic count?
[inaudible]
Thanks. Any other questions? Before we move on to the site plan?
Let's finish up first.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, just a brief description of the site. It's shown on this exhibit. We're adjacent to a Lockheed Martin facility on the south side. The...
If we can bring the screen up, please. Thank you.
The Kaiser Permanente Building and the Hampton Inn Hotel on the north side. Of course, North Frederick Avenue to the east and I-270 to the south. The proposed building will be located in the middle of the site. Employee parking will be located on the east side, and service vehicle parking will be located on the west side. Both parking areas will be screened by existing berms. There's a large berm along the 270 frontage that will be maintained, as well as the existing landscaping. There's also a berm on the east side separating the employee parking from North Frederick Avenue. That will be maintained as well. The employee parking area will have a series of pedestrian walkways. This will connect to a proposed extension of the public hiker-biker trail along North Frederick Avenue that will extend along the frontage. The site layout will include a series of stormwater management rain gardens. They have been designed to meet the city and MDE requirements. The stormwater design also includes modification to an existing stormwater basin on the south side. And the site development will include additional landscaping and screening to go along with this trail as well.
Do you have any more questions on the site plan? We're happy to talk about that. And then I was just going to address the questions raised in the memo that was received this afternoon.
Site plan questions?
No.
Was any thought put into the enormous span of that asphalt in terms of any sort of groundwater recharge? And we're going to be obviously challenged on this property for stormwater management.
We are, so...
It's early, I understand, but...
Yes, there are. So this employee parking area is, the interior islands have been expanded as much as possible. They are all sized to fit rain gardens. So for every two bays of parking, there will be one large rain garden. We're actually maximizing the area to each rain garden that's allowable by code, so there's a good bit of green area in that, and those will be landscaped with shrubs and trees as well. The rear of the site is a little bit more challenging just because the operations, it's difficult to include the green space there, so we've kind of bulked it up on the east side. We'll be adding landscaping on the street frontage around the trail, and then the south side, southeast side, will be entirely green space and lawns.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? All right. What do you want to do next?
I just want to address briefly the memo that came in, and then I'm certain...
Yeah, that's fine. I guess I mentioned that we've just seen it tonight, so I don't know...
If it's protocol, I'm happy to let the adjacent property owner's attorney speak, and then I can come back.
My only point was, I don't know that if you answered any questions right now, we would even know what the original questions were.
Oh, you don't have any questions? Then I'll just tell you what I think.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Then we'll wrap it up.
Okay, there we go. So as you can see, the site's been designed to be, to fit into the vision for North Frederick, which right now is an eclectic mix of uses.
We'll be adding landscaping on the street frontage around the trail, and then the south side, southeast side will be entirely green space and lawns.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
No.
All right. What do you want to do next?
I just want to address briefly the memo that came in, and then I'm certain.
Yeah, that's fine. I guess I'd mention that we've just seen it tonight, so I don't know.
If it's protocol, I'm happy to let the adjacent property owner's attorney speak, and then I can come back.
My only point was, I don't know that if you had answered any questions right now, we would have.
Oh, you don't have any questions?
The original questions.
Then I'll just tell you what I think.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. The bottom of your rap.
Okay, there we go. So as you can see, the site's been designed to be, to fit into the vision for North Frederick, which right now is an eclectic mix of uses. You also have the Costco across the street from the site, you have several car dealerships, but it's put the green along the street to make it attractive. That wasn't in the memo that you may or may not have read, that was just my opinion. So the memo speaks to a couple issues. First, it says that the notice wasn't properly given and that the signs weren't posted properly. The signs were posted, two of them, and one may have fallen down, and we lose our responsibility to keep them up, but one was still standing when the pictures were taken. And as far as I understand from staff notices, went out properly. Second, the memo claims that the use is not permitted in this particular zone. We obviously think otherwise, and we've confirmed with staff that there are several similar uses in the E1 zone. E1 uses are permitted uses in the I-3 zone, so we don't see that as a real issue either. Let's see. There's a question about the stormwater management plan. Noel alluded to a stormwater management pond that has to be revised on the southern section of the site, and that's something we have to work with the adjacent property owner on. It actually currently straddles the property line, and it would be adjusted, so it's, there would be more of it on their property, and that exists under a declaration of covenants. And if that's not something that they will agree to, although as I started out by saying, there's been these discussions over the past several months, and we had no indication that was something they would not agree to, however, if that's the case, we will redesign it, and when we come back at preliminary site plan, you'll see something different with a revised concept stormwater management plan. Traffic, there's a letter from Wells and Associates analyzing the traffic in the packet. I think the most important, we'll have a more robust study at preliminary site plan. I think the most important thing to note is that it is a significant reduction from that which is there today and from any new building that could be built there. So we don't see any traffic impact, but certainly we'll analyze that further as we move along. As far, and there's, excuse me, the property owner currently shares, if the screen is up, there's, the access to this site is at a signalized intersection with North Frederick and Christopher Avenue. There's a light, and you can turn into the subject property and access the existing office building if you are working there, or you can turn left and go to the Lockheed Martin building. That is not a recorded easement, that is just something that has been operational. And certainly, if there's a desire to maintain it, the applicant's willing to work with the property owner to maintain it and do so at that signalized intersection. Okay? That's pretty much it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to come back and respond to this.
I know it's early on, but have you all done any site sections to sort of understand the relative height of the building, the berms, the relationship to 270, things like that? Is that?
We're working on that now.
Yeah.
And we'll probably submit something to public works between now and the preliminary plan submission, but yes, the site will sit, will sit higher than 270, but the berm will shield it, but we'll.
How tall a building is, would you estimate this will be?
Yes.
I think just over 30 feet.
Just over 30 feet.
Okay. And that's essentially just a tall one-story building, it's a warehouse right here?
Yes.
Is there, or would there be any public access retail services at all here for?
No, there's no public access. It would be a secured facility, so you'd have to be entered through a security gate, so only authorized people would be allowed to enter.
Okay. Are there any other questions before we go to the public? No? Is there anyone here that would like to comment on this application? Please go on up to the podium, and if you'll state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
I'm representing the adjacent landowner.
Sure.
You still need my address?
Yeah.
My personal address?
Well, something for the record.
Okay. My name's Dan Kelleher, attorney for outside counsel for Lockheed Martin Corporation, which is the adjacent landowner on the south side of the property, as was mentioned earlier. I'm joined by Marty Bossy, who is the asset manager, asset management director for IS and GS, which is the business area that's located at the 700 North Frederick site.
Okay.
I apologize for you receiving the memo from us so shortly before this meeting. Obviously, would have liked to have provided you with more time to review it. Unfortunately, as I sort of outlined in that memo, which hopefully you'll have a chance to look at, we were not aware that this meeting was scheduled for today until yesterday afternoon or yesterday morning, when I spoke with the planner at Gaithersburg Planning and Zoning. So it was not our intent to blindside the applicant or anything like that. As Ms. Lethem had mentioned, my client has been in discussions with her client with regard to this potential redevelopment. We have not indicated that we approved or disapproved of the plan at that point, and we were never notified that this planning session was going to go on today. So with that in mind, I'd like to raise a couple of issues and concerns that we have. One is that our site is an office building site that's integrated with the current office building used by IBM. It shares stormwater management programs, facilities. It also is the subject of an agreement with the SHA with regard to stormwater management, which was required when they expanded North Frederick Avenue. Our site is the corporate headquarters for IS and GS, which is one of the largest business areas for Lockheed Martin Corporation. It houses 753 employees, all full-time employees, 106 of which live in Gaithersburg. Over the last several years, they've invested more than $30 million into improvements into the building. The building is currently used to house the cyber command center that they have, and so we think that the proposed distribution center use is incompatible and inharmonious with our use. I would like to briefly discuss, as outlined in my memo, that we do not believe this is a permitted by right use in this jurisdiction, in this area. Section 241.
Thirty seconds, please.
Yeah. Section 24143 outlines the by right uses for I-3. It references 24151, which is the E1 uses by right. This use is not a by right use because it is not a distribution center related to a warehouse, I mean, a wholesale facility. And furthermore, it is not a by right use because it does not meet the storage requirements in 24153 with regard to on-site storage of trucks.
I guess what I'll have to say is, I know you've submitted quite a bit of information in a lengthy memo, we'll have to deport a staff to get into that a little bit, but I appreciate you amplifying your point in the hearing. And your time is up, but did you have anything to want to close with?
I mean, in closing, I would ask you to either postpone approval of this conceptual plan until we have time to further review and provide the studies that we need. For instance, we'd like to do a market study as to what will impact it will have on the value of our building. Initial reports from Jones Lang LaSalle, JLL, is that it could reduce the value of our building by as much as 30% because of the new use. And we would also like to do further studies with regard to stormwater management. We are not predisposed to have additional portions of our property used for stormwater management pond, which currently straddles the sites.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, Marty, just maybe a quick headline on how notices are issued on a case like this, or on an application like this. It's not purely the signs on site, right? They're mailed and?
I'll maybe defer to Trudy.
Okay, sure.
She's familiar with the dates and those types of things and process on this specific application.
In our rules of procedure and also in the city code, we have a requirement to notify nine days prior to the meeting. And we send out postcards, which refer you to the city's website to view the agenda. The agenda's posted, so that is the access to the agenda. The notification is we utilize the state database to get addresses, and we send them to the addresses that are registered with the state.
As the property owner?
As the property owner. And that was done in accordance.
Okay. Good. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this application? Seems no one. I know, Trudy, you have a recommendation on the staff report. I want to float the idea that, given the information we received, if maybe we should allow staff to analyze that a bit and review it before we formalize a recommendation or formalize our findings. Does that hold the record open?
I think that's probably a good idea. I'd love to hear from the applicant if that's a burden or not.
I think we're ready to respond to many of the points that were put out, but again, you have not had.
Zoning issues seem clear, yeah.
Right, you have not had time to review that, but we do believe that it is a use allowed by right. We have several facilities, we have, the planning commission has approved at least two facilities in either the E1 or the I-3 or the E2 zone, which goes to that section. And they have all had storage of vehicles. So a precedent has been set by the city in approving these types of facilities.
The objection that's under for no distribution is actually under public buildings, meaning not open to the public, but actual municipality buildings or state or county buildings, right? Or federal. The restriction of distribution centers in the I-3 doesn't, does not apply to private buildings. It's public buildings in the sense that they're municipal, state, or federal.
Right.
So that's a misreading of the code, by the way.
Yes.
And so the, and we're assuming the disco's under, obviously, a general office or general business services, which is clearly allowed in the I-3.
The warehouse and distribution, so the warehousing packages and then.
You have to go to the special exceptions or all the way to the enterprise zones to find the restrictions which don't apply to the I-3.
That's correct.
An I-3 zone does not clearly state that those restrictions within the enterprise zones apply to the I-3, it just says that the use is allowed in the enterprise zones are also allowed in the I-3 zones.
Yes.
And I actually have less concern that the use is allowed, because I have a suspicion you're very thorough on that. But some of the discussion around how stormwater will be managed and what's happening with some of those agreements, I'd be, want to be sure we have a clear picture.
Particularly on a site like this where, to me, you know, it's just, I'm sensitive to the stormwater management issues of such a large swath of asphalt.
Yeah.
But solving some of the stormwater management issues, I know it's early, but having a clearer idea, I guess, of what some of the stormwater management solutions are would seem to be something to worry about.
And that usually comes at this stage of preliminary site plan. Approval was given for a conceptual stormwater management system, and it's conceptual. We've been discussing with the applicant since the beginning, when we first saw this, is, you know, you really do need permission of the property owner next door, and if that permission is not given, then they will, they need to restructure the whole preliminary stormwater management plan, and they are aware of that. We've checked with the city attorney about many of these, everything that was raised, and we feel that since this is a conceptual site plan, there is truly no entitlements really given with the conceptual site plan. It's basically for us, for the planning commission, to look at the layout, very basic layout, before a lot of engineering costs have been put into the design of the site.
Well, I guess on that front, I'd be, I'd be looking for a little more information. That's why I was getting to the site section, about how this really does impact the view from, what kind of buffers really happen between the building and I-270. I think Matt brought up the parking field on the northwest side. You know, is it too much asphalt, both from an environmental or stormwater management perspective, but also just from a pure view and buffer? You know, right now, the buildings that are there have some pretty well-established landscaping. There's some, the berms are sort of sensitive to the siding in the buildings, and everything kind of works together to make sense when you see it from both the Frederick Avenue side and the 270 side. So I'm not sure this does that at N.A., but that's something to consider. Obviously, we'll get into architecture at the, hopefully, now, when we go to preliminary, we go straight to site plan? What's the staff recommendation?
The applicant has, they have the option to either go preliminary and then do a final site plan, or they could, and many times, people have combined the final and the preliminary site plan.
I guess my, I'm also, I'm sensitive to the fact that there are pending lease issues, and so a formal declaration of who the tenant is is not available tonight, but I think more information about the siding in the building, the buffers, exactly what the use is, I think all of that's important. I don't know if we want to wait until final site plan for that to play out.
Yeah, it has an affair on it that needs, I would certainly recommend to the applicant that they put in a preliminary plan, but separate, to gather more information, but.
Yeah, I'd like to see this go through preliminary plan also, if we can, if we can direct that as a condition, or if that's just a, Trudy, I don't know how you need that stacked up.
I think that the applicant's hearing you very loud and clear.
Yes.
Maybe, again, with that, some sense with the building mass and architecture, was just to understand how it really is sited.
Yeah, and the intention, I'm sorry, it's just to take the, as Trudy described it, to get the concept before the planning commission and staff get these comments, and when we bring the preliminary back, it's very responsive.
Good. So any other comments you had to add or?
Just in general, my impression is that, yes, this is actually a large lot, office and general business environment with, you know, the large, the Costcos and Sam's Club and their large parking fields surrounding large buildings with a lot of large loading But this is certainly an exaggerated version of all those, of all those businesses. So compatible, that word would have to be stretched a bit to get to here, I would think. But certainly, and I certainly, you made me double-check the code, but to your detriment, you were wrong, but I think, so I think the code is clearly, you know, essentially an improvement, approving this use, it's just whether it fits in as a compatible use in this particular neighborhood becomes the question in front of me, and it's not a clear, there's not a clear answer for me, yet. Like John, I sort of have a dozen answers to sort of help me make that decision, or a dozen questions, needing a dozen answers to sort of get there. And at conceptual level, I just don't have them, so it's that sort of double-edged sword. I don't want to go too far and be down the wrong road, but I don't want.
Yeah, likely to get a preliminary plan and get some of these things answered. I wouldn't skip to final plan. Trudy, on the nine, or is it eight conditions?
Eight conditions.
Eight conditions. There are some that are contingent on final site plan. If we direct this to preliminary plan, should we defer those, or?
This is, this relates to both levels, so we just want the applicant to understand that these are requirements, and we want them listed, recommending listing.
That's fair.
Would you like me to do the wrap-up?
I'm sorry, what?
Would you like me to do the wrap-up?
Sure.
Because I have not done that.
Sure, yeah, okay.
Staff recommends that the planning commission make a motion that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report, and exhibits, and recommendation, grant approval of SP-7083-2015, IBM redevelopment as a warehouse distribution facility, concept site plan approval, finding it in compliance conceptually with Sections 24-142 through 24150 of the I-3 zone, and Section 24170 of the city code with the following eight conditions. We had nine, we took the eighth one and the ninth one.
And just to be clear, what, nothing vests with the concept site plan, so.
That is correct.
When we see it at preliminary, some of these issues could be back on the table as concerns, or, okay.
And certainly, if staff can promote a joint meeting about the site with the neighbors, we would, we would really like to do that, because we want to make sure that both properties are fruitful and that they don't affect each other negatively.
No, I appreciate that, and I think that's a great point to make, is that I think we want to see this as an amicable development, not something that's argued on just the. we want to see this as an amicable development, not something that's argued on just the points of the law, although the law is really something to respect, no question for that.
Understood, but there are many impact questions.
Yeah.
And for me, it's compatibility again, and I think so, you know, a lot of the stuff that we need to get sort of proven out before an approved preliminary plan would certainly be new sheds, like John's saying, a really, a much more careful and less brutish, you know, look at stormwater management on this enormous roof and enormous piece of asphalt, and I think connectivity too is important for me. I think you mentioned it briefly, I think automotive connectivity is important, sure, but I also want to see that, and I think you hint at it here on the plan, connectivity to that, to the large setback that the hotel has leading up to Casey East, whatever it's called these days, and then, you know, that sort of hiker-biker trail is to me, connectivity, connecting to, you know, allowing the connection to your neighbor as well, is just as important as that automotive connection, but I think both are important, so.
One other thing to bring back to, I think at a preliminary level, is given it, there's a 24-hour operation, what is, what kind of lighting impact does this really have? I have suspicions it'll be lit up pretty well, and we want to understand what that impact is to the neighbors.
It needs to be, yeah, it's going to be a tough design in this large piece of asphalt.
I get the feeling a large piece of asphalt's a bit of a lightning rod issue, or-
I've heard that, twice. It'll be the most beautiful, large piece of asphalt in the entire city.
Don't make promises.
Beautiful and large piece of asphalt really don't belong in the same sentence. Okay, what else do you need from us in terms of direction? Is that, we don't need any conditions on the preliminary plan, is that enough direction, or do we need to make a condition that it come back at that level, or?
I don't, I don't believe you. I think the applicant's heard you loud and clear.
Okay.
We'll remind you of your recommendation.
So, the record will count, will carry all of these various levels of critique and what we expect to see at the next level. Okay. Any other questions on the recommended motion?
Well, I'm kind of confused. Are we going to make the recommendation or delay it?
Well, I think, I think staff is reassuring us that they've got a pretty good handle on the memo that came in late, but I think we'll take some more time to analyze that.
I'm comfortable proving the concept plan, yeah.
Okay. Because at the end of the day, you're still neighbors.
That's right.
You know, you still have to work together, so.
The applicant, we've already started trying to follow up.
Okay, good. All right. So, you're ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion, and it's not a recommendation, it's a planning commission approval of the concept plan.
Okay.
I know it's recommended in there a few times, but-
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report, and the recommendation grant approval of SP 7083-2015 IBM redevelopment as a warehouse distribution facility, concept site plan approval, finding it in compliance with 24-142 through 24-150 I3 zone, and 24-170 of the city code with eight conditions as read into the record.
Second. It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Good luck, and we look forward to seeing, seeing more on this next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes, that's the end of our formal agenda, and now we put it from the commission. Do you have anything tonight?
Just happy Labor Day, and Kentland's 5K run should be as exciting as ever.
Now, I'll be waddling by.
You will, okay.
Another great use of sort of TND development is, it's great for 5Ks, that sort of close-in street section, it's a really nice use for that, for our public infrastructure, so that's great, but no, not for me.
Okay. I actually had a couple of things queued up, and I think Marty's going to help me on some of these. What do you have up first?
We've got, you had brought up a couple of sign issues, and we've-
Let me introduce this, you know, we had, we had a representative of DED management in a couple of months ago, talking about some potential redevelopment on the site as an expansion, and I was, you know, at the time, there was some discussion about how the vision for the center might be moving forward and what might happen in the future with some tenant thing, and it struck me that very shortly thereafter, and apparently overnight, a bunch of signs showed, very intimidating signs showed up on the site, and they are everywhere. Now, I know staff is checking into the legality of these and all, but the reason I bring it to the planning commission's attention is sort of an idea that there may in fact be, you know, a right for property owners and property managers to create these sort of no trespassing, don't park here, you'll be towed sort of things, but I think it's one thing to keep an eye on, that in a mixed-use development, especially with a lot of shared parking, a lot of complicated invisible property lines, that we need to stay on top of this. If this is something that's really in fact allowed, we probably ought to look at how to temper this, because it certainly doesn't send the right message to the public that as they come onto the site, they're being threatened with, I don't know, it's $400 or something, and a towing company, and no trespassing, and it's really the wrong way to approach a mixed-use parking agreement, I think.
There are actually state law provisions, along with the Montgomery County code, that actually enhance it to some extent, that require for parking, whether it be an HOA, a business, based on the number of spaces you have. I believe it's for every 48 spaces, or it may even be less than that, it may be for every 25, that there needs to be a sign, and it looks like that's, it doesn't have to say the no trespassing, but the information there is laying out what is required very specifically by state law, as well as some parts of Montgomery County law. So, when you say it's something to be aware of, you're very correct.
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know how this can play out, I, it just, it worries me to see that in the context of something that we promote as being very public, even if in fact there's a, there's a private component to this that is, I guess, being managed.
Well, and the purpose of the sign, it's not to say a sign has to be there because it's a parking lot, it has to be there if they intend to tow-
Right.
-because there has to be an entire 72-hour notice before they tow, and they have to have the signs there.
And so, what John's, I think, hinting at is that we need to discuss parking as a shared resource within-
Exactly.
-districts, particularly, you know, this is an example of a tripartite district, right, has three major components to it that have to interlace with each other from a use standpoint, from a utility standpoint, from an infrastructure-like parking standpoint, and if they don't, then it all falls apart. So, and each of those approvals was based on the fact that they were going to pick each, pick up each other's slack and pick up each other's differentiated uses.
And these signs don't indicate that's happening.
And these signs do not indicate that, very good.
We have to get to the bottom of that somehow.
But in the future, we may discuss these things as a proffer item or something like that.
Yeah, something, I think, as they're, and I mean, at a lot of levels, there's some concern there, because they're, they're actually hung on traffic signs in what I would have thought was a public road.
There are a lot of private streets in that area, so that's probably, what, the view that I'm looking at, I'm pretty sure it's private.
That's private at that point, okay. Well, that's too bad.
Mr. Chair, if I might, I think your point is well-taken, that, you know, that while these may be required by law to, Assistant Attorney Johnson's comments, only if they intend to go after people and take that tact, and I think that that's, that's the bigger issue.
That's right.
You know, why are we taking this tact, especially at this point? So, we'll have some communications, and we'll let you know how.
And in general, too, we'd love it if staff put a couple, you know, of your better-brained cells together and sort of figured out a way to-
Yeah, that's assumed.
There's some, there's some in there, I know it, I know there is. So, the, you know, whether it's the next, you know, iteration of this plan, or another plan, or a new plan, it, there's, there's got to be ways to do shared resources like parking a little bit better in terms of the proffer piece, and then I, and then my assumption is that it becomes an enforcement issue that maybe the city can pick up, and say, "Look, if a car is abandoned past a certain date, then you alert the city," and then the city takes action and tows that car, and so they can get away with not having to take on the private responsibility of maintaining what we're, what we're now demanding of them be a shared resource.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think it's heightened for me because of the press lately on some of the, oh, I don't know, predatory towing efforts that have been going on-
Right.
-where folks have little, little time to react if they find themselves, you know, in someplace they shouldn't, and there really aren't clear boundaries on these sites for which parking spaces belong to which property owners, and it's a fact of life that there's, that was on, that was deliberate, so, you know, the idea that somebody could be just waiting around the corner to nab you if you happened to be one, one parking aisle over or something is really, really kind of inappropriate, I think, in the context of this area. So, anyway, thanks for looking into that, and let us know how that plays out. What'd you have up next? You got any good planning awards?
Well, let me, before we get to those, let me just mention that we, Chairman Bauer and I met with Ollie Mumpower from the Department of Public Works, and also with Joe Allen, who's the chair of the Transportation Committee, to talk about kind of some long-range transportation issues. I thought it was a great meeting, and I appreciate, I appreciate everybody making the time for that. What we got to kind of coming out of that is, is that continuation on our discussion of last meeting, about really trying to identify some priorities going forward with, with elements of the master plan and strategic planning and those types of things. Just to build on that and kind of let you know where a couple of additional pieces since the last meeting, Rob Robinson, our long-range planning manager, met this morning with Parks and Recreation Department about their future master plan and their efforts, and I think the decision has been made, and this is still conceptual, but they are going to be following kind of our master plan process, which I think is great, great news, kind of becoming another element of our master plan. We're, that's the way, you know, we're pushing things, and I think that they're amenable to it, and, but along with that comes, our staff will be involved in that project and the historic preservation element of our master plan. Those are both going to be fairly big efforts in the coming months, so that's not to say that, you know, there aren't other priorities, but we're going to need to really have, rely on you folks to give us some direction as far as what's next and what the priorities are, and try to do some triage on, on some of the things. So, I think as far as the transportation element goes, we've got some good ideas for some, like I mentioned, some triage efforts that we can do this fall and going into the next budget cycle, and then try to get, get some ideas in front of you folks as far as the timing of that, of that element of our master plan, and whether we want to try to tackle that next, whether we want to try to tackle it along with the land use element, which would be a much bigger effort, what the ideas would be from our recommendations as far as whether we try to do that in-house, or build some money into the budget to-
Sure.
-get some consultant help. So, I'll be bringing back some of those ideas-
Good.
-for you folks to listen to. But I think starting the conversation with the Transportation Committee was a great, great thing, and I would encourage you, they're going to the December, and I'm trying to think of which, I will get an email out to you folks, they're going to one of the December mayor and city council meetings to give their year-end report, and I think that would be a great thing. If you can't attend, then maybe just to follow up and watch it on, on the stream afterwards. But that'll be a great kind of primer to what they've been up to the last year and what their plans are for the next year as far as transportation focuses go.
I think one of the, one of the things that came out of the discussion, it was, you know, pretty clear that staff is doing a really nice job of being in front of all of the different transportation issues that are going on around the area, but that it's not necessarily as well-integrated as it could be, and I think some of that is that priority issue. And we were talking about things like, you know, raising the awareness of bikes in the city, or raising the awareness of what public transportation crosses paths with biking, and making all that sort of a more, not only visible, but, but almost marketed and branded thing within the city, it's a huge potential, especially if we see some of our neighbors doing it, Frederick and Rockville and other things. So, I think what came out of it was it'd be nice to at least, now it's on the, on the table as something we know about, and we can begin to push forward as budgeting season and priorities and strategic directions come along.
It's no doubt an expensive, you know, undertaking to really put a big capital S strategy on top of these really complex issues, transportation as such. Sounds like a small category, and your description may sound, you know, blasé to the two old guys watching tonight, but the, you know, it really becomes, you know, essential that we do some of this big-brain, albeit expensive, strategy thinking. I think that it's, it's a, you know, it's, it's the shot around the sun. Once that momentum gets going, it'll do 20 years of good, you know, and, you know, it's really a wonderful thing. Excited about it.
Okay.
And to follow on with that, on Monday, in front of the mayor and city council, we did have a work session and had representatives from the state to talk about the CCT progress, as well as the report from VHB, our consultants, for the 355 BRT, the Bus Rapid Transit part within the city of Gaithersburg, and I thought that that draft report is, turned out really nice, and we should have the finalized version on the web in the next week or two with the executive summary, and so I'd encourage, you know, take a look at that. I think we got some really good information. Rob did a great job of wrangling that project and really getting a good outcome for the city for the money we spent. And then, just to let you know that we have been awarded a TLC grant for a kind of a first-mile, last-mile look at our transit centers for the Mark and some of our other main transit hubs, kind of looking at pedestrian connections, bicycle connections, how people get to and from them within that last, you know, little bit. So, we haven't quite scoped that out, we wrote the grant proposal and have been granted, but the consultant has not been chosen yet, and so, but that'll, that'll be a great project, and I imagine that will, will give you a heads up as, as far as that gets going.
Thanks.
Cool.
All right. And the last thing I wanted to bring up, and I warned Marty ahead of time on this one too, we have in the past done planning awards, and it's been a number of years since we did it, so I wanted to just float the idea that maybe we get that on the calendar sometime sooner or later, but at least start acknowledging a way to maybe pull that into the, into the program at least in 2016, if not a couple of years later.
Yeah, I think one of those awards things, they tend to inspire development even before you, you know, so if you ramp it up for a year, and, you know, we can mention it a few times on the DS, obviously, and then, and then give the award later, it really works out better than just sort of popping up and saying, "We're gonna, we're now going to give awards to anybody who's submitted for the last two years."
Well, maybe think about what the categories ought to be this time around, you know, with the, I think the, the type and quantity and overall scale of development is obviously shifting from, from some of the larger projects to some more surgical projects, and it's probably good to remember that, that they don't necessarily, many don't remember them three years ago, but they're, they're really good projects.
We actually haven't done them since 2010.
2010?
And that was, a lot of that was the, because of the recession, there really wasn't that much for us to look at.
Yeah, yeah. But there's been quite a bit since then, and I think if, if we think about categories that align with some of the strategic directions of the city and celebrate the projects that really begin to fulfill and support those, those directions, I think that can be a really good thing to-
Cool.
-have out there in the community.
So, it's a great idea.
Maybe in the next, next meeting, so we could at least target where that might fall in the year. Sound good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, real good. So, Trudy, you want to jump in with anything you have tonight?
Sure. Well, first of all, I'd like to introduce you to our newest staff member of the planning division. This is Jasmine Forbes, you've seen her before. She was our planning technician, and she started full-time with us on August the 2nd.
Welcome formally.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jasmine has her bachelor's from Frostburg and her master's from Morgan.
Great. Thanks, it looks like you're going to present something or say something.
She was up there to put the pictures, the pictures for it.
Oh, okay, thanks for pulling those pictures up for me.
What was your master's in, if you might?
City of Mutual Plowing.
Oh, great. Excellent.
And she's done a lot of projects in the Baltimore area, she's a Baltimore native, and-
Good. Excited, thank you.
All right, what else we got?
Well, we do have a meeting in two weeks on September 16th, and then our next schedule is October 7th and 21st.
Yeah, we, we had a busy August, but there doesn't seem to be too much in the way of joint meetings coming up, right?
No, we will on Tuesday night, because Monday's a holiday, the mayor and city council will be introducing an annexation, so we'll be having an annexation hearing on the property that's known as Potomac Valley Shopping Center South, and so that, that will be coming up. And the other thing that we're, is that that meeting is the floodplain zone introduction, the new ordinance for that, and, and you all are really not involved in it, although we'll probably give you a presentation about it during these, this time period. And then the- And then the other thing that the council will be finalizing is the, the two text amendments that you all made recommendations from last meeting.
Okay, great. Thanks, Trudy.
We mentioned to Trudy that very good timing on the floodplain ordinance with the driest August.
Now's the time, always practical, Trudy.
You fix the roof when it's not raining.
That's right.
Anything else tonight?
Yes, Chairman Bauer, I just wanted to follow up on what Marty said about the work session on Monday, I would encourage, I know, Jerry, you were there, but I would encourage you all to watch that work session, there was a lot of good information on the CCT, as well as Bus Rapid Transit on 355, and the consultant recommendation that was given at the work session was really, from my perspective, largely embraced by the council, so it was a very positive reception. But what's going to happen from here is that there is actually a joint meeting of the Gaithersburg Council, Rockville Council, and the county council, this is the second joint meeting, specifically on Bus Rapid Transit, on October 8th, which I believe is a Thursday.
Is that a day meeting, or an evening meeting?
Evening meeting.
Evening meeting, okay.
At the executive office building in Rockville, and in advance of that meeting, at the council's October 5th meeting, Rob Robinson plans to present for policy discussion recommendations so that the council can take an actual position, and we may do that by resolution, not, I'm not sure, I don't think we've decided that, but they will be taking a position that night that can be given at the October 8th meeting.
How does that play out, though? If it's 355, it's a state route, right?
So, it's a state route, but the whole reason for our consultant presentation, we did this in conjunction with the state and the county, the county and the state both fully knew what we were doing.
Yeah.
But we wanted to get it out in advance, so that we can actually inform the state and the county's study of how BRT gets accommodated on 355, and that's what all their recommendations dealt with, and that's what the position will be that the council takes on the 5th.
But the implementation would come from the county or state level?
Right. One of the important things that we get out of it as a city is, number one, clear, very clear direction on the needed right-of-way. So, as applications come in front of this body, and in front of mayor and city council, staff can say, we need X amount of feet on this application in order to fit the desired, you know, section within, and also, the station location is something that I think the city, you know, has a, you know, we, we, we need to determine our own destiny in that, and not just rely on, okay, it's X amount of spacing from, from the other stations, and this, that, and the other, and actually take some land use considerations into that.
That's good, particularly as land uses come in along 355, and we're trying to figure out where, yeah.
And as was mentioned, I think, you know, it's, it's really important to realize that this, this state and the county are fully in support of our efforts. Now, we haven't checked back with them to see if they're in support of the outcomes of the project, but, but they were very much in support of us doing a more specialized study within our area. This, this study came, grew out of some of the unique impediments we have within the section, the cemetery, the bridge, you know, some of our historic properties, those types of things.